Good morning. This is the City Planning Commission Public Meeting held at NYC City Planning Commission Hearing Room, Lower Concourse 120 Broadway. Today is Wednesday, April 24, 2019. As a courtesy during the proceedings, we ask that you please turn off all cell phones and electronic devices. All speakers should fill out a speaker's card. In addition, we ask that those providing testimony, please identify yourself, limit your remarks to three minutes, and speak clearly into the microphone. I will now call the roll. Chair Lago?
Here.
Vice Chairman Knuckles?
Here.
Commissioner Bernie? Commissioner Capelli?
Here.
Commissioner Cirullo?
Here.
Commissioner De La Ous?
Yes.
Commissioner Dweck?
Here.
Commissioner Edie? Commissioner Knight?
Here.
Commissioner Levin?
Here.
Commissioner Marin?
Yeah.
Commissioner Ortiz?
Here.
Commissioner Rampachet?
Yeah.
A quorum is present. The first item is the approval of the minutes of the regular meeting of Wednesday, April 10, 2019, and special meeting of Monday, April 22, 2019.
On the minutes, all in favor? Aye. Opposed? Minutes are approved.
Scheduling on calendar numbers one through five, we have resolutions for adoption. Schedule on Wednesday, May 8, 2019, for a public hearing to be held at NYC City Planning Commission Hearing Room, Lower Concourse 120 Broadway.
On the resolutions, all in favor? Aye. Opposed? Resolutions are adopted.
The next part of the calendar is the Report Section on Page 6. Borough of the Bronx, calendar numbers six through nine. Calendar number six, CD 1, C190207ZMX. Calendar number seven, C190208PPX. Calendar number eight, N190209ZRX. Calendar number nine, C190210ZSX. In the matter of application for zoning map and zoning tax amendments, disposition of city-owned property, and for the grant of special permit concerning Brook 156. For a favorable report, for favorable reports on calendar numbers six through nine. Chair Lago?
Yes.
Vice Chairman Knuckles?
Yes.
Commissioner Capelli?
Yes.
Commissioner Cirullo?
Yes.
Commissioner De La Ous?
Yes.
Commissioner Dweck?
Yes.
Commissioner Knight?
Yes.
Commissioner Levin?
Yes.
Commissioner Marin?
Yes.
Commissioner Ortiz?
Yes.
Commissioner Rampachet?
Yes.
Favorable reports have been adopted on calendar numbers six, seven, eight, and nine. Borough of Brooklyn, calendar numbers 10 and 11. Calendar number 10, CD 3, C180292ZMK. Calendar number 11, N180293ZRK. In the matter of applications for a zoning map and zoning tax amendments concerning Two Howard Avenue rezoning. For favorable reports on calendar numbers 10 and 11. Chair Lago?
Yes.
Vice Chairman Knuckles?
Yes.
Commissioner Capelli?
Yes.
Commissioner Cirullo?
Yes.
Commissioner De La Ous?
Yes, and I hope that the council modifies to NIH Option 1.
Commissioner Dweck? Commissioner Knight?
Yes.
Commissioner Levin?
Yes.
Commissioner Marin?
Yes.
Commissioner Ortiz?
Yes.
Commissioner Rampachet?
Yes.
Okay. Favorable reports have been adopted on calendar numbers 10 and 11. Borough of Manhattan, calendar numbers 12 and 13. Calendar number 12, CD 11, C190235ZMM. Calendar number 13, N190236ZRM. In the matter of applications for a zoning map and zoning tax amendments concerning the East Harlem Neighborhood rezoning. For favorable reports on calendar numbers 12 and 13. Chair Lago?
Yes.
Vice Chairman Knuckles?
Yes.
Commissioner Capelli?
Yes.
Commissioner Cirullo?
Yes.
Commissioner De La Ous?
Yes.
Commissioner Dweck?
Yes.
Commissioner Knight?
Yes.
Commissioner Levin?
Yes.
Commissioner Marin?
Yes.
Commissioner Ortiz?
Yes.
Commissioner Rampachet?
Yes.
Favorable reports have been adopted on calendar numbers 12 and 13. Borough of Queens, calendar number 14, CD 2, N180518ZRK. In the matter of an application for a zoning tax amendment concerning manner products, for a favorable report as modified on calendar number 14. Chair Lago?
Yes.
Vice Chairman Knuckles?
Yes.
Commissioner Capelli?
Yes.
Commissioner Cirullo?
Yes.
Commissioner De La Ous?
Yes.
Commissioner Dweck?
Yes.
Commissioner Knight?
Yes.
Commissioner Levin?
Yes.
Commissioner Marin?
Yes.
Commissioner Ortiz?
Yes.
Commissioner Rampachet?
Yes.
For a favorable report as modified has been adopted on calendar number 14. Borough of Staten Island, calendar numbers 15 through 18. Calendar number 15, CD 2, N160023ZAR. Calendar number 16, N160024ZAR. Calendar number 17, N190204ZAR. Calendar number 18, N190214ZAR. In the matter of applications for the grant of authorizations concerning 563 Todd Hill Road for adoption on calendar numbers 15 through 18. Chair Lago?
Yes.
Vice Chairman Knuckles?
Yes.
Commissioner Capelli?
Yes.
Commissioner Cirullo?
Yes.
Commissioner De La Ous?
Yes.
Commissioner Dweck?
Yes.
Commissioner Knight?
Yes.
Commissioner Levin?
Yes.
Commissioner Marin?
Yes.
Commissioner Ortiz?
Yes.
Commissioner Rampachet? Calendar numbers 15, 16, 17, and 18 have been adopted. Borough of Staten Island, calendar numbers, calendar number 19, CD 2, N190249ZCR. In the matter of an application for the grant of a certification concerning 57 St. James Place for adoption on calendar number 19. Chair Lago?
Yes.
Vice Chairman Knuckles?
Yes.
Commissioner Capelli?
Yes.
Commissioner Cirullo?
Yes.
Commissioner De La Ous?
Yes.
Commissioner Dweck?
Yes.
Commissioner Knight?
Yes.
Commissioner Levin?
Yes.
Commissioner Marin?
Yes.
Commissioner Ortiz?
Yes.
Commissioner Rampachet?
Yes.
Calendar number 19 has been adopted. Borough of Staten Island, calendar number 20, CD 2, N190272ZCR. In the matter of an application for the grant of a certification concerning 27 Emerson Avenue for adoption of calendar number 20. Calendar, I'm sorry. Chair Lago?
Yes.
Vice Chairman Knuckles?
Yes.
Commissioner Capelli?
Yes.
Commissioner Cirullo?
Yes.
Commissioner De La Ous?
Yes.
Commissioner Dweck?
Yes.
Commissioner Knight?
Yes.
Commissioner Levin?
Yes.
Commissioner Marin?
Yes.
Commissioner Ortiz?
Yes.
Commissioner Rampachet?
Yes.
Calendar number 20 has been adopted. Borough of Staten Island, calendar number 21, CD 3, N190110RCR. In the matter of an application for the grant of a certification concerning 146 St. Clair Avenue for adoption on calendar number 21. Chair Lago?
Yes.
Vice Chairman Knuckles?
Yes.
Commissioner Capelli?
Yes.
Commissioner Cirullo?
Yes.
Commissioner De La Ous?
Yes.
Commissioner Dweck?
Yes.
Commissioner Knight? Commissioner Levin?
Yes.
Commissioner Marin?
Yes.
Commissioner Ortiz?
Yes.
Commissioner Rampachet?
Yes.
A favorable report as modified has been adopted on calendar number 21. The next part of the meeting, the public hearing section on page 19. Borough of Manhattan, calendar number 22, CD 4, C190213ZFM. A public hearing in the matter of an application for the grant of a special permit concerning 515 West 18th Street Garage.
We'll have a 10-minute presentation by the applicant team, which is comprised of Jesse Mazer, Jeff Rubin, and Seth Wright.
Good morning. My name is Jesse Mazer of the firm of Fox Waterchild, and we represent the applicant for this 180-space accessory parking garage at 515 West 18th Street. I'd like to touch briefly on the two components of the parking garage, and I'll be followed by a transportation consultant who will discuss the data in greater detail. Whoops. My ability is overwhelming. First, with respect to the garage, our application for 180 spaces did not derive from the 181 units that are being constructed in the building, but rather from the fact that our extensive environmental remediation of the site yielded 36,000 square feet of excavated cellar space to program. The site is located in a floodplain, and therefore there are not many productive uses for the space. This was a site that was well-known to the government that needed substantial remediation from the energy history it had in the past. When you combine this with the fact that over the past decade, the local neighborhood has seen construction over 2,000 new residential units and almost no net new parking spaces, there appears to be a strong demand for residential parking. We felt the garage was the highest and best use for this space. We need to remember that this is a neighborhood where the census data indicates that one in four households own cars, so the 2,000 households have brought 500 cars or so into the neighborhood in the recent past. Our transportation consultant, Mr. Rubin of Philip Habib and Associates, will dive into these numbers further. But if you just look at the residential population of our building, we anticipated demand for up to 100 spaces. This aligns with census car ownership data, once you consider the size of our condominium units, which were average over 1,500 square feet, and where two, three, and four bedrooms will make up two-thirds of the buildings, there are no studios in this project. Second, with respect to the impacts of the garage, some questions arose at certification and at your review as to the quantitative findings for the special permit relating to the flow of pedestrian traffic and the functioning of street and bike lane and the character of existing streetscape. Again, our transportation consultant will provide more detail, but suffice it to say, at the busiest time of the day, each minute, we'll see about five pedestrians walking along the street and one bicycle in the bicycle lane and one car entering or exiting the garage. We don't believe this is in any way an overwhelming set of numbers. With respect to neighborhood character, we are actually eliminating four of the five existing curb cuts to our property, and this is a neighborhood where the surrounding streets have no fewer than 50 curb cuts providing access to parking garages and loading docks. All that said, we understand and appreciate the commission and the community's concern about the optics of 180-space garage accessory to 181-unit building. For this reason, we were very willing and anxious to meet with the Manhattan Borough President and her staff and listen to her recommendations, which we believe would be appropriate for our site, namely that we would seek car sharing for a maximum of 36 spaces. And we have been reached out to a number of institutional users in the neighborhood that would like to have access to this parking, most of them in the law enforcement industry. And we would commit to working with the community board to facilitate that use, and then we would probably only prioritize 100 spaces within the garage for our residents. With that, I will turn it over to Mr. Rubin.
Good morning. My name is Jeff Rubin. I'm a planner with Philip Habib and Associates. I'll be talking through the question of the demand from the building and also addressing in a little more detail some of the findings and relevant information. Also, my colleague Seth Wright, an engineer with Philip Habib and Associates, is also here. Seth won't be making a statement, but is available for questions more about what goes on sort of inside the garage. With respect to the question of the demand from building residents, it is true, I think, for the Manhattan core area in general and for this census tracts and the areas surrounding this site, that the ownership rate of vehicles to units is about 25%, about 1 in 4. We investigated this further. One of the issues that we, because our, the applicant found that their experience in other buildings in this area has been that demand is higher than that. And one of the characteristics of this area is that roughly, slightly more than half the households in this area, the surrounding census tracts, have just a single-person household. So it's about 53% out of the total. So, and those types of households are much less likely to have a vehicle rather than larger households. And so correlated to the unit split in this building, which again is about, about 30% of the units are three bedrooms or bigger, and another third of the units are two bedrooms, so we're talking about 64, 65% of the units being two bedrooms or bigger. Those types of units, based on census data, have higher vehicle ownership rates than smaller-sized households and smaller-sized units. And when you couple that with, we were not able to cross-tabulate this data with income data, but we know that this is a market-rate building, and based, again, on the applicant's experience, I believe that the demand for spaces is going to be 80 to 100 spaces from In terms of the, it's, I believe it's in your packages, and it was covered in the review session, so I don't really want to dwell on it, but of course, there is a quantitative finding required for this special permit, and it relates to the fact that as of right, new developments are allowed 20% parking spaces in relationship to the number of units. We prepared a study which showed that this, even with this proposed 180-space garage, the surrounding area and in close proximity and recent trends, there would only be approximately a ratio of 8% residential parking growth ratio with this special permit. So I think that that sort of speaks for itself. I can elaborate on it if you'd like. I know that many buildings, two-thirds of the buildings in this area are providing no, the new buildings in this area have provided no parking at all. Many other buildings that are providing parking are just doing what is allowed as of right, such as the building across the street to the south. There are also a couple, I guess what we could call qualitative findings, which relate to the questions of avoiding undue conflicts between pedestrians and vehicles, and also the efficient functioning of the street as it relates to, including any lanes that are especially dedicated for certain types of vehicles. And of course, we know that this site on 18th Street, there is a bike lane along 18th Street that runs along the north side of the street, adjacent to the project site where the curb cut would be. We, a couple of points that we would like to make in regard to this is that this, as has been mentioned before, this site had many curb cuts in the past. It will now have one curb cut, only that curb cut is being provided on an as-of-right basis. In the event the special permit wasn't approved, there's still an as-of-right garage here. So the curb cut is sort of reflective of that. We also looked at the question of pedestrian and bicycle and vehicle potential conflicts and how these different modes can relate. The bike lane here is a one-lane, pardon me, a one-block-long bike lane extending from 11th Avenue, the West Side Highway, to 10th Avenue, while the Hudson River Park bike lane nearby carries a great deal of bicycle traffic. Bicycle traffic here is much lower. We conducted some counts recently, albeit there is construction occurring, but we also did counts on a nearby street which has, does not have a bike lane, but has comparable characteristics in general, and I think it's consistent with what we are familiar with from this area. The bike traffic is relatively modest. I think we quoted in our, about one, on average, about one bicycle per minute. And then similarly, there's, the special permit findings talk about pedestrian conflicts, and this is a block which, given its location on the end of the grid, given its location that at the western end of the block, there is not a crosswalk across the West Side Highway. The crosswalk is on the south side of the street, and that likewise, the stairs of the High Line are and will remain on the south side of the street relative to many places we find in the Manhattan Core. The pedestrian volumes here are moderate. There's another finding which talks about the streetscape of the area. And I, I'm over?
Yep.
Okay. Well, our slide will remain up there, and if you would like me to, I can expound upon the point, but thank you for your time.
Questions from the commission. Commissioner Marin?
More of an observation than a question. So Mr. Rubin says that 53% of the households in the Manhattan Core are single individuals, and his, in this building itself, you have 64 to 65% are two and three bedrooms. And when we do the Manhattan Core study, we're based on the number of units and not the larger units, which are the units that would sort of come in with the vehicles. So I'm just wondering if maybe we need to take a look at our Manhattan Core calculations a little bit further, because it is true, you're absolutely right, that singles may not have vehicles, and they do car share. So it would be interesting to note and to compare those two numbers and see what that comes up to.
And if I may, just to clarify, the 53% ratio was for this area, which overlaps with West Chelsea and a little bit of Greenwich Village, so I'm not claiming that for the entire core, but certainly for this area.
I would note that there are lots of questions about the Manhattan Core, including whether it extends sufficiently far north as we've seen the growth of the city. I think that there are widely varying views with respect to the direction that the city should be going with respect to car ownership. I don't think, given the relatively recent nature of it and the department's work program, that we're likely to be doing it. What's interesting about this one is that it is a request for a discretionary special permit rather than an as-of-right determination, but very apt observation.
Other questions? Commissioner Dweck?
Thank you. So just to, you know, I view the parking for law enforcement as a public benefit. Can you expound on that and those cars? There was mention of them coming from the DEA facility and then from the NYPD facility, and will those cars be agency cars or agent cars that'll be coming off the street? So?
They would be agency cars that would be coming off the street is what it's projected for it to be. That's where the demand be, and that's currently where a lot of the complaints are deriving in the neighborhood about these agency cars that are just parking illegally in the surrounding neighborhood, and it would alleviate that problem.
And how many cars is that?
Up to, we would project somewhere in number about 40.
40 cars. And that's with the DEA or with the JTTF?
It could be either, we've been approached by a number of law enforcement agencies, DEA being one of them. There are other federal law enforcement agencies that are parking in the area currently.
Got it. Thank you.
We did, the department didn't have time because of the timing of when we received the Borough President's recommendations, but we are going to follow up. We think that there are significant concerns about having law enforcement cars in a garage that's also publicly accessible. They tend to prefer separate parking facilities, and so that is something I think we would be quite interested in what the state of the discussions are, how it would be binding, and in particular, how the sensitive law enforcement agency vehicles would coexist with a publicly accessible garage.
We look forward to joining in that conversation.
So, and just to, again, if you can clarify, I'm sorry, so the clarification was, are they agency cars or agent cars that park there while they do their work at?
As our understanding, it would be agency cars.
They will be agency cars. Okay.
And again, we'll have more information, because we welcomed the spirit of the Borough President's recommendations of looking for opportunities, but believe that there are serious questions as a practical matter as to whether they could coexist.
Commissioner Levin?
So I think the Borough President's suggestion and, you know, is reflective also of the fundamental concern here is about allowing a garage that has more spaces than are projected to be needed for that building or that are allowed as of right. And the degree to which that excess capacity will encourage people to come to this neighborhood on a transient basis with their cars rather than getting there some other way. So I understand the situation that you're in, that you've got a giant hole in the ground that you would quite reasonably like to fill with some useful use. I think getting agency cars, if they're parked on the street, I'm not so sure how big the security concern is about having them parked in a public garage. And so the notion of using that as a way to suck up some of this additional space makes great sense to me. But I'm also very sensitive to the community's concern about incentivizing car traffic, and also frankly, to what you acknowledged as the optics of allowing a garage that has a one-to-one parking ratio. I know that's not how you arrived at that number, but we've seen a number of these applications that are precisely intended to be one-to-one, and I, we, I think, don't find that a very appealing kind of public policy. So how can we be sure that this garage, which apparently does meet the quantitative findings under a flawed process that we have, but it's the process we're stuck with? How are we not exacerbating the use of cars in this very crowded neighborhood, increasingly crowded neighborhood?
I don't think we're being unmindful of that issue. I mean, and that is why we freely admit that the number came as a result of the physical dynamics of the building and the requirement to excavate an extraordinary amount of our site due to its prior pollution. And that is why we have no resistance in actually encouraging and embrace the Borough President's recommendation, that we'd limit the parking for the residents to a number that'd be regulated, licensed, and limited. And our client has a long history of not violating its regulations. And then we saw this, the Borough President saw this opportunity to relieve another problem that's there anyway. We're not encouraging law enforcement cars to come to that neighborhood. They're there. It's a fact of life, and we thought it was a way to improve equality of life. And as I said, we have the space, and we have no other viable use for it. It's in the floodplain. We cannot really put any usable commercial space down there.
Will you, you know, so supposing that the institutional uses can't be worked out, I think the real concern is about transient parking, hourly parking, allowing people to come visit the High Line or whatever they're going to go to the, how's this garage going to operate? Is it, can you assure us that spaces will be rented on a monthly basis only?
Yes. That will, we will more than embrace that condition. If it is the wisdom of the commission not to grant us the 180, but some lesser number, we'll figure out a physical way to make sure that we abide by the commission's decision. This client particularly has no interest in trying to skirt the rules of the City of New York at all.
Okay. Well, no, but the rules here would honestly allow a public parking garage.
It's certainly not the intention.
And so we need to be sure that the way that that garage operates is consistent with what the needs of the neighborhood are.
And we can make sure that, and be respectful about signage and making sure that people do not think this is a public parking garage for their, for their use.
Right. You don't have the guys out there waving people into.
No, not yet.
What would be the zoning mechanism that you would craft that would say, one, only monthly parking, and also you had mentioned car sharing?
Well, we are in front of you with a discretionary permit. We assume that the permit can have conditions that would then be enforceable, and we would agree to that enforcement mechanism and whatever reporting mechanism you would like to, we could work together with the department to come up with something that I'm sure would be satisfactory.
And that the spaces would be left empty if not used for law enforcement or for car share?
I don't want to parse words. What we thought we would do is we'd be working with the community board to find out the appropriate use of those spaces not being transient. They do one thing, not being transient.
So you don't anticipate having this wrapped up before the vote on the special permit?
I think we could have, the identified users, perhaps not, but the, but the use of it, yes.
So empty if not used for law enforcement or?
We could limit it to that, yes.
Other questions? Commissioner Rampachet?
With regards to the parking, it's a tenant parking. So if a law enforcement car comes in, does the city allow valet attendant to move a vehicle like that?
My suspicion, and garage expert, I am not, and that's why there are others here, but I have a very strong suspicion we're going to be talking about segregated space. It's not going to be, you know, your tenant, your resident of the building, you're not likely to be parking your car next to the DEA car. I assume that the spaces will be segregated and controlled and monitored and managed in a completely different mechanism than the residential parking.
Okay, because I know what the stack is. I can't just roll my car in.
I don't think that would work in this fat pattern.
I think that providing additional information about how it would work in practice, and particularly if it would require a separate curb cut.
Commissioner Ortiz?
Hi. Review session, I had a question with respect to the findings of pedestrian flow. This is one of the few blocks where we have an entrance and exit to the High Line, which sees over 5 million visitors a year and rising. And so I do have concerns about, you know, visitors and tourists ending up on a street that is seeing, you know, the entry and exit to vehicles. that is seeing, you know, the entry and exit to vehicles. Can you speak to that issue or concern with respect to that finding?
I think Mr. Rubin spoke to it, but I'll just highlight it, and then he could, of course, make it more sensible than I. The staircase to the High Line is not on our side of the block, it's across the street. And the crosswalk to the Hudson River Park similarly is on the south side of the street. So people coming down the staircase, walking to west, doesn't make sense logically that they would then cross the street to cross the street a second time. That's not the way pedestrians interact with our city. So we think that while the High Line is certainly a growing population, it's not going to be that which is going to impact our side of the street. And as I said, as we've pointed out earlier, you know, previously before the erection of this development, there were five curb cuts on this street and a very, very large parking lot. So we think we've made this a lot more pedestrian-friendly, and in fact, is the pedestrians more than likely will not be on our side of the streets.
Even if walking from the 23rd Street subway, which would be the closest one from the north?
I would acknowledge that some 50% of the people who are going down this block, who are coming from 23rd and 8th, would go on the north side of the sidewalk. We're not suggesting that there are no pedestrians here. That would be a bit disingenuous, I think. But we're suggesting that the volumes are moderate and that it's one curb cut, it's in the middle of the block, it's well away from both the avenues and the High Line itself.
Okay. Thank you for the clarification, because it struck me that this was a narrow street where the difference between walking on one side versus the other doesn't suggest people would only be on the south side. Commissioner Levin.
Yeah, it is worth noting, since I took a loop by there, I guess Monday, on the way home. Man, what a mess that block is right now with the construction, and I don't, I'm not pinning that on you all, but it is. It is. It's a wild situation there. But that block ends at the West Side Highway at kind of the mid, at a kind of no-man's-land part of the park and Chelsea Piers. So if you're going to Chelsea Piers, you're probably not walking down 18th Street to get there, and there's no park to get to. Now, it might be a different story once Mr. Heatherwick's pod farm park in the river gets developed. Particularly people making architecture tours and Mr. Heatherwick's work all over the neighborhood, we might see more people going down 18th Street. But, you know, in terms of river waterfront users, I don't think this is the block that a lot of pedestrians are going to choose. And as Mr. Rubin pointed out, the crosswalk is on the south side of the street. You cannot, you wouldn't even think about trying to cross on the north side, because the traffic is zooming by.
The only thing I'd note on that is that with the Heatherwick Pier, and probably even more significantly with Google taking over the pier, I anticipate that this area with, which right now is one giant construction site, is going to become much, much more populated. Yep. But I do think the connectivity, that the current state is construction on both sides. Commissioner Ortiz.
Just to follow up on Commissioner Levin's, I think rightful, concerns about, you know, whether we're incentivizing automobile usage here. There were some conditions in the Borough President's recommendations with respect to bike parking, which you've not touched upon. You've touched upon car share. So could you speak to that and what commitments you might be willing to make with respect to affordability and number of spaces? Because as you noted, it's on a bike path.
Originally, as the project is currently projected, the bike parking was something that was directed towards the residents of the building, but as, in light of the Borough President's recommendation and how seriously we take the Borough President's words, we would be more than willing to modify our proposal to include bike parking as part of our garage for, to encourage bike usage in the area.
I would encourage that. I think it would make a lot of sense. There are people who bike, who need to park. There really are insufficient places to park, lock a bike here. And if folks are trying to get to the High Line, you know, this is the location where they may very well want to. I think that the pricing needs to be right, because you're comparing it to being able to park free on a pole.
We're not, Commissioner, we're not adverse to a better idea.
Okay. Then I would encourage that, and I'd like to see more on that. Thank you.
Absolutely.
So you'll follow up with fleshing out?
Yes. That'll be part of our response.
Other questions? Another question that I had, on what day was the bicycle count done? Because I'm struck by the fact that some hardy commissioners bicycle through the winter, but that the real biking season probably kicked off with yesterday's beautiful weather.
Understood. To answer your question, we conducted last week and even as early as earlier this week, bicycle counts on 18th Street. We also, as I mentioned, did 20th Street, which is a street that has less construction taking place on it. We also had the benefit of some video from the applicant's construction cameras, which showed 18th Street near the High Line and also sort of conform with our manual counts that the volumes are low. I grant you that they, July might be, June, July might be somewhat higher, but I think, you know, in good faith, we did what we could.
Thank you. Other questions? And thank you to the applicant team. And I'll note that no one else has signed up to speak on this matter, but if anyone else is present and would like to speak, please come forward. The public hearing is closed.
Thank you.
Borough of Queens, calendar number 23, CD6, C180399ZMQ. A public hearing in the matter of an application for a zoning map amendment concerning 76th Drive and Austin Street rezoning.
Madam Chair, I'm recusing this matter.
We're going to have a 10-minute presentation by an applicant team comprised of Richard Lobel and David Rosenberg.
Richard Lobel of Sheldon Lobel, PC, for the applicant, and I'm joined by David Rosenberg in my office. Madam Chair, Commissioners, we're here for the Austin Street rezoning, which is the rezoning of approximately two lots and a portion of a third lot from an existing R2 district to an R32 district. So you'll notice on the zoning map, the area that's circled, it spans two maps, and this is currently an R2. However, it is bordered both to the east and the west, as well as to the south, and actually on this block to the north, by an existing R6 district. So you can see the area circled here. The actual boundaries of the rezoning would be a line 55 feet from the southeast corner of Austin Street and 76th Drive, as well as Austin Street itself and 77th Avenue. And by way of background, you'll take a look at the land use map here. This R2 district, which spans two whole blocks and portions of three blocks, was actually instituted in 2000 pursuant to the Kew Forest rezoning. So what this rezoning did at the time was rezone this particular area, these blocks, from R6 to R2. And what that did for purposes, and the important part of this application, is it made doctor's offices from a, it changed them from a conforming use to a non-conforming use within the R2. At the time, the properties located within this rezoning area, both were both occupied by doctor's offices as they are today. So the zoning change map is indeed very minor. You can see the area that is currently R2, and then on the right is bubbled and is, would now be R32. And this change would essentially solely be addressing the use at the property. The residential FAR remains the same. However, the use groups are now expanded to allow for medical office. Other, you know, additionally, an R2 district would only permit single-family detached, whereas an R32 would permit multifamily. However, the bulk of the buildings right now is, you know, pretty much at a pot point five or about. One of the properties slightly exceeds that, the other one is slightly under that. So we've included plans and calculations from these, from the development site. Again, no new development is proposed at the site. There are existing doctor's offices on Lot 1, located on the ground floor, and Lot 67, located in the basement of the building. Essentially, what this would do would be to allow the existing doctor's offices here to expand within the building. And as was discussed along the course of the application with many of the interested parties, this is essentially to allow for more back-office space to be located within these buildings. The current occupant, the doctor, Dr. Manuel, cannot locate his billing or back-office use within this building, because that would be an expansion of a non-conforming use. This would indeed allow him to expand beyond that. Here are some photos of the property, which primarily demonstrate that, as you can see surrounding the property, there are relatively dense R6-type buildings of six stories or greater. So the R32 here, in addition to allowing the doctor's offices, actually provides a nice transition to existing R2 on the block. And I would just finally note that the Community Board was very understanding about the application, approved this by a vote of, I believe, 34 to 2. We received the recent affirmative vote from the Queensborough President's office, so we're hopeful that the Commission would echo these two determinations, and we'd be happy to answer any questions.
Questions from the Commission. Commissioner Ortiz.
Hi. I think the first time we saw this, we had some questions about the condition of the, you know, the sidewalk and the, just the walkability of Austin Street. I mean, it's a very popular pedestrian street. There's a playground across the street, you know, and you have a fairly wide curb cut, if I recollect, if my recollection serves me, you know, with cars coming in and out. How do we rationalize that, and how do we maintain the walkability of Austin Street? Because we, you know, if you're expanding it, my assumption is, you know, that we will continue to use that parking lot and we will continue to see lots of cars coming in and out. How do we make the situation better?
Yeah, this is something we discussed with the Community Board as well. I think that the intensity of the use on the site would remain actually pursuant to existing conditions. The intention is that there'd be no new doctors located on the site. The existing practice, which is a relatively sophisticated orthopedic surgery practice, has relatively few doctors or relatively few patients coming in and out. But I think what we would note is that we would, we would improve the site with regards to the curb cut, which I believe currently exceeds what would be permitted at the site, as well as to do any required beautification procedures that would be required pursuant to landscaping regulations and such. I think that the doctor's intention is that with the alteration application to allow for the legal community facility here, that those improvements would be made to the site. But again, the, as far as the intensity of the use, it would remain under current conditions, and none of the environmental review to this, to this point, had seen it as being, you know, an issue with that regard.
So you're saying that the curb cut will need to be narrowed?
I think that's correct.
It will be required?
Correct.
You're saying there will be improved landscaping?
Correct.
What are the requirements?
I think that there would need to be additional plantings that would be required pursuant to zoning. But I, you know, I don't, I know that that would just be a part of the alteration application. We would basically comply with whatever is required as of right.
I think it could be helpful if you would submit a follow-up letter outlining what the additional planting requirements are and what the maximum width of the curb cut would be.
We'd be happy to do that.
Okay. Thank you.
Sure.
Other questions? Thank you.
Thank you, Chair. Commissioners.
And again, on this matter, no one else has signed up to speak, but if anyone else is present who would like to speak, please come forward. Public meeting is closed. And Madam Secretary, any other business? So we may be setting a record, 46 minutes.